Say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The ayes have it. Um, this is a, a project that we've seen come before us numerous times down at, down at Raymond's Point, which I, which I think is great because little by little, all of these properties are being upgraded. Um, and that's, that's good for the town.
It's good for me, too.
Well, yeah, it keeps you, keeps you busy.
Wonderful for me. It's like, it's like evergreen. Thank you for the vote. I've got another one coming next month, so we'll see how that one works out. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. But we haven't voted yet, Mr. Baldi. Okay, um...
That's pretty straightforward.
Right, right. Uh, okay, so I'm gonna call a roll call vote. Um, Mr. DiNofrio?
I'm gonna approve, say that I have any all the standards required. That's approved.
Okay, Mrs. Sucey?
Approve.
Ms. Posla?
Approve.
Ms. Lockley?
Approve.
And the chair also approves. Application is approved as presented. You're welcome. Same time, same place.
Okay, the next application of fifty-three Raymond's Point has been put off into, uh, December, okay? And the next one we have is, alright, Cornerstone Adult Service. Has been put off to December. Please?
Yep, Michael Marietti.
Yeah, you're going up the, you're going up the...
Very first one.
He's going up there.
Okay, new, uh, new business. Okay, I'm gonna have the secretary, please read the first application into the record. Okay, is the applicant here?
Present.
Okay, please give your full name and address.
Michael Marietti, eight forty Willie Hollow Road.
I'm gonna raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, in your own words, sir, please explain to me what you'd like to do.
I'd like to erect a detached garage.
Okay, and you're here because of, uh, the height variance?
Correct.
Okay, and this is going, like, down in a hole a little bit?
Yeah, I kinda live in a valley.
Okay, so it's not like it's gonna look like it's protruding above the house, the main house?
Correct.
Alright, um...
Why does it need to be that high?
Um, I don't wanna lose any storage above the garage. I'm trying to, uh, utilize my, um, space efficiently.
So you plan to have full ceilings up there?
Uh, a loft for storage, correct.
Okay.
Uh, the house is set back... My house is about four hundred feet back, and the proposed garage is like another, top of my head, eighty to a hundred feet, maybe? No, I can only see one neighbor as it is.
Do you have a garage now?
I have, uh, three car attached.
Okay. And, uh, do you have storage above that one?
No.
So you got a three-car attached garage now, and the reason for this one is?
I don't really have quite enough room for storage of my vehicles, and I like to bring in all of my, uh, lawn furniture, whatnot, in the winter. I have yard tractors with attachments. I like to keep a tidy yard, keep everything inside clean, out of the elements.
Okay, what's in the three-car garage now?
Uh, can't really walk too well. I have a pickup, a SUV, Collin Davidson ATV, and a one-ton dump truck.
Do you require any plumbing to be done in your garage?
Um, I would like heat in there, yes.
And more heat inside of it?
And electricity.
Alright, do you require an entrance from the second floor from the outside or inside?
Inside.
You realize we do not allow any residents...
For stor- storage use.
Just storage, no...
Correct.
What do you use the dump truck for?
Um, I own the landscaping company, going back over five years ago, and I use it for my driveway, and I just can't seem to get rid of it.
So...
So, I mean, this isn't gonna be a building that you're gonna operate a landscaping company out of, right?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay, uh, would the board like to go up now and actually have a look at this here? Would you fit other thing on the side lot line better than us, right?
Yeah.
Mine, this all fits, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, does any other board members have any questions to this applicant?
Um, did you consider going lower than thirty feet? I mean, that's...
I did, and I drew that trust out many different ways, and aesthetically, that's what I was happy with. And I have an eight-foot ceiling up top for maximum storage.
Now, did you say you did want plumbing in there, or just electricity?
Plumbing, yes.
For heat, so we can, hot water heat?
Yes.
So you're extending from the, you must have hot water in the house.
Yes, correct. Probably going to have a separate system out there.
Um, what do you plan to store in the, in the top?
Um, basically any yard, um, tables, chairs, stuff like that, uh, any overflow. I have kind of a damp basement. I don't like to keep anything down there. So I would like to, uh, get stuff out of my basement up in the, that's dry.
Okay, you don't plan on creating a, a living, a dwelling unit up there, right?
No, ma'am.
I have a question, not necessarily for the applicant, maybe for Brian. Um, I only have the letter that appears to have gone to the butters. Do we have a, a butters list? I just wanna make sure there's no notice issue.
Probably isn't any.
I have the receipts. That helps.
Yeah, I do, to, to carry. I just don't have in a butters list, so I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any issues.
I give...
Me from the look of it, I don't imagine, I don't imagine there's a ton of butters. He has it, okay.
Would you like it?
Um, maybe we could get a copy of it? Just to make sure that we...
What's the, um, what's the height of the house?
I believe it's twenty-nine feet.
So the garage is gonna be about the same height as the house?
Correct. Yes, the house is actually down in a hole compared to the road, and the other house is around me also. But yes, the elevation of the garage is even lower than the house.
More like the heat, so you can work out there?
Uh, yeah, I like to work on my vehicle, uh, dry form, please.
Keep that dump truck running, in case you need it.
It's kind of a pit.
Yes, uh, board draw finished, okay. Sir, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat.
Thank you.
Anybody here would like to speak in favor of this application? Does anybody like to speak in opposition? Or have a question on the application? Yes, sir, please step up. I'm gonna ask, give your full name and address.
Joe Giorgiani, eight oh four Willie Hollow Road.
Okay, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do.
What were your questions?
Um, so, I'm the one neighbor to concede the house, and so I'm just curious, um, it looks like you have a D and B roof there, and so it matches the house pretty nicely.
Okay, you gotta address this to the board.
They'll ask me this question, okay. Um, so I'm just curious about what the, uh, outside of it's gonna look like.
Okay, can you put that up on, put it up on the... That's what he proposes, right here.
If it's gonna be a wood, wooden siding?
Yeah.
And, um, as far as location in relationship to the house?
Where the existing garage is now, right?
No, no, way in the back. No, it's, it's between the house and the property line.
So it's...
Way in the back.
Back behind the house?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this application? Okay, this time here, um, I'll request a, uh, motion if we wish to vote on this tonight, or does the board like to go up seats? Okay, you have one motion that, uh, I just wrote out tonight, who made the motion?
No, somebody did, I mean, Russ, okay.
I missed it, I missed my second.
Okay, stand by John.
Do we need to stipulate that, uh, no residential problems for law, or is that probably part of it? Yeah, okay, it's removing the stipulation.
Okay, uh, John, how do you vote on this application?
All approved as presented.
Denise?
All approved as presented.
Chair approved as presented. Zinni?
Yep.
Russ?
Approve.
Application's approved as presented. Okay, next application, secretary, please read in the record. I'm gonna ask, can you give your full name and address, please, sir?
Andrew Katie, ninety-nine Pembroke Lane.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, explain to me what you'd like to do, sir?
Um, just build a standard, uh, one and a half, o- oversized, one and a half car, uh, garage on the property. Uh, detached.
Alright, so... So you wanna build a twenty by twenty-four garage?
Correct.
And you're, uh, only ten feet, three inches from that side lot line?
Yes.
And what's required, twenty on that, Brian?
Yeah.
What's required there, twenty?
Twenty.
Nice letter from the neighbor.
Um... Okay, would you submit the type of plans you're building, or...
All I have is the site plan right now, uh...
So, this detached, there's, uh, an alternate plan attached to the first tenant's apartment? Right, Andrew, that was an alternate plan?
Yeah, uh, I'm still talking to the architect, and he's, um, until we know exactly, uh, whether or not we're gonna get the variance, he, he didn't go ahead and make actual building plans yet. Um, but the plan is just a standard garage. Um, the alternate plan that I submitted, um, was after talking to him, he suggested I, I submit the alternate plan, um, because most likely, we're gonna go with the alternate plan. The way the, the street is, I'm, I'm on a corner. So with the alternate plan, it kinda rotates the garage a little bit, and, um, it gains a little bit of clearance with the, uh, property line, and it also makes the garage face the road a little bit better, so you know, you can pull straight out of the garage onto the road, instead of pulling into the garage kind of on an angle.
Okay, and that gentleman that's forty-two feet away at one oh one Pembroke Lane, he actually, uh...
She.
Oh, okay, she, uh, thank you for the question, um, wrote a letter to the Board of Review, and, uh, has no issue with, you know, should review it.
Yes.
Put right on there, the distance of ten feet, three inches, which you propose to do on the property.
Yeah, ten foot, three inches would be the worst-case scenario, if we kept the garage square to the house, but if we rotated it, um, it would be eleven feet.
Okay.
Uh, that's her, the policeman is her son. He grew up in the house, yeah.
Any board members have any further questions on this application? Alright, sir, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat.
Thank you.
Anybody would like to speak in favor of this application? Does anybody have, uh, opposed to this application? Want to speak opposed, or just have a question on the application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we vote on this tonight.
Before we vote, I just want to read to the record that, um, in granting a dimensional variance at the hardship that will be suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, shall amount to more than a mere inconvenience, which shall mean that there'll be no other reasonable alternative to enjoy this benefit. Um, and also, under A, in granting a used variance, the subject land or structure cannot yield any beneficiary use if it is required to conform to provisions of the ordinance. So, I just wanted to get to the record that approval would be in accord with the ordinance.
Okay. Alright, uh, I am very familiar with that area and location, and I think most of us are at the... Pembroke Lane is a very popular location in town, and, uh, I have no objection in voting on this, especially with the resident right next door, especially the weather improved. Okay, um, John, how do you vote on this application?
I approve.
Denise?
I approve.
Chair approves? Jenny?
No.
Russ?
Approve.
Application's approved as presented. Thank you very much. Next application, please read into the record. Okay, sir, please give your full name and address.
Uh, my name is Daniel Bailey.
Okay, and your address is?
Uh, fifteen forty Main Street.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. Uh, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Thank you. What would you like to do, sir?
Um, just keep my dogs.
Okay, you're here for a kennel license?
Uh, yeah, but I don't have a kennel. I just have metal, um, metal fencing. My great-grandfather lived on that lane for many years. He died on that lane. My great-grandmother died on that lane. My great, my grandmother, that's been there for generations. My grandfather owned horses, cows, pigs, chickens, beagles, you know, I just put, uh, when I moved there in two thousand and three, I just put up a fence, and then, um, I put up, so the dogs weren't on the ground. I put, I don't have a lot of money on my disability, so I just raised it off the ground with wooden wire and stained it with watered-in paint.
Okay, how many dogs you have now?
Seven.
Seven, that's a lot of dogs.
I know, uh, I know. I take care of them. I feed them every day. I'm up at seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning. I walk them, you know?
What kind of dogs are they?
Bulldogs, Old Englishes. And I got a, a She's Half Bull Master, half Napoleon Master. And then I got a, a French Bulldog, and I got a Minson about this big.
And what are the ages of the dogs? Roughly?
Nine, eight months. Oh, and they're all definitely easy.
Where's the oldest?
Nine.
Nine, and he must be the youngest.
Uh, this, this year, uh... How long have you lived there?
Two thousand and three.
Did you have all these dogs there?
No, I've had, oh, I've had, uh, I've had some die, you know, of old age. And I, I've had a couple that I bred, you know, little puppies that I've had, and, you know, some people gave me because he couldn't have anymore.
Some people gave him to him.
Yes.
Do you have anything else other than the seven dogs?
Oh, I got, uh, these little things, they look like squirrels, like their sugar gliders. They're in my house. They fly in little cages. But you gotta be careful because they can nip you through the...
Yeah, it's a bird?
No, they look like, uh, squirrels, but they go pch, pch, all night long.
How many of those do you have?
Three.
Any other animals?
Two cats.
Two cats.
Two cats, seven dogs.
I'm a big animal, I mean, you know, I can't read or write. I was married, I was married twice, divorced twice, nine children, you know? I love animals. I always have. My great-grandfather did. My uncle that just died in Maine did, you know?
Okay, do you realize that if you were to obtain a kennel license, that means you gotta be licensed through the state, and it's a lot more involved than if you just come in front of us?
I, I, I don't know. That's what the dog officers said, keep my animals.
Boy, I understand that, but what I'm trying to explain to you is your housing would have to be approved, your waste removal would have to be approved, you'd have to, uh, have to come in and remove the waste. You can't just pull it out and trap.
How about Harry? I don't, I don't know. I, I never heard of such...
No, that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
I, I don't know. I, I especially led my whole life. I don't know much.
How long would it take you to amass this number of dogs? Okay, so, so you have one that's eight months old? Now, was that...
That's half bull, uh, half bull dog.
Is that one of your puppies? Okay, so are, so these dogs, some of these dogs are not spayed or neutered? Okay, so, um, you have accidental breeding or intentional breeding of these dogs?
No, I, 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 I've done it to watch it breed.
Uh-huh.
But, you know, um, I like watching the births, but I don't do it. I've done, I've done it maybe, I've lived there, I've done it three times since I've lived there.
Okay.
Just to watch, I, I just like to watch, you know, my kids come over, they watch the...
You like to walk the dog, you like to watch the dog give birth?
And, and, it's, it's, you know, my children come over. It's, it's only Nashville. Ain't nothing wrong.
No.
Ain't telling anybody. I ain't hurting anybody.
No.
I love animals. Ain't, if there's something wrong with that, then God's gonna punish me when I get to heaven. I know he's gonna open up them gates for me.
How big, how big's your property? How many acres?
Oh, I don't know. I don't have the measurements of that big.
Oh, one point, one point one acre, okay.
How many adults in the house? Do you live alone?
Just me, yeah.
Just you? There's two houses on the lot?
Yes, and my sister lives on one, and her husband lives on the other.
Uh, they, but both of those houses been there the whole time?
Yes, my great-grandfather's, my uncle that just died there.
Okay. And you have a, an existing barn?
Yes, yep.
Do you keep any of the animals in the barn?
Yep, in the winter, when it gets too cold.
In the winter, okay. Do they live outside primarily?
Some of them do, yep, but they come in when it gets too cold.
Into the barn?
Yes.
Okay.
Or if it gets too cold, I put them in the house with you.
Okay, now, the, the two, um, well, two kennels you have here, they're basically chain-linked?
That's all the, uh, there's no cement, there's a chain link.
Okay, do you have any, um, any, uh, dog coops or dog houses outside for them also?
I got, um, one big one here.
Uh-huh.
And one big one there.
Okay, and they're inside those fenced-in kennels, the area?
Yeah, yeah, I can't let them move, so I get a big cover.
No, that's true.
I have the control all over you like that.
That's true.
Yeah.
So what else do you have on the property? You got automobiles?
Oh, yeah, 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 I just trained, uh, me and a friend of mine, uh, just trained, uh, changed the motor in my, uh, Ford Ranger. He's the mechanic guy, and I just, you know, I help him out.
So you have unregistered vehicles on the property?
Yeah.
How many vehicles do you have on the property?
Um, I have two that's mine, that's not registered, but one's a pot truck that I took to use for, um, what do you call it, to replace the motor for that truck.
So how many other vehicles are located there?
I have two that I drive, so, and then I got that truck, that other Ford Ranger.
So there are three vehicles there, that includes...
Oh, no, then my sis, my sister and her husband, my, my, my sister's husband runs like construction business.
Yes, oh, so is he running the construction business out of that location?
Yes.
And what kind of a construction business is that?
He's a hell of a company, when you think about it.
Oh, so how many vehicles does he have?
Three. He has his big F P fifty, Explorer, it's some other car he's got in trade. I don't know what it is, I, I think it's a Pioneer.
Okay, now, do they have any other pets, uh, animals? Your uncle or...
Your sister.
My sister, no, her dog, her dog just died of cancer back ten years ago. She had a little puppy.
You look at the house, you can, you can see, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of different type of debris, uh, you got...
On this side, we, on this side, way out in the back, I, I scrapped some metal here and there when I need money. I just don't have money to go. I, I, I need, it's all stacked like this, you know? I think that guy couldn't feel him clean. There's, there's kids that come over, kids will play. I do what I can. I'm over and you're over, you know?
Okay, so you got a construction company running out of there?
No, 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 not a, he, he runs, he, he stacked his wood in the barn, and his tools in the barn, and he goes off with his F one fifty, and he goes and builds houses, he goes, he puts foundations in and stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, what would you do if, um, if, if we said you couldn't keep this many dogs, what would you do with them?
I have no proof. I'd probably keep them anyway, 'cause somebody murdered me. I gotta lie, you want me to lie to you?
Okay, okay.
Okay, so you have seven dogs now?
Yep.
So we said, look, we'll allow seven, but as they get old and pass, you can't replace them. You can have no more than five.
Oh, I, I don't plan on, uh, uh, getting any more. I'm one person.
So you'd be okay if we put a limit of seven, and as they die naturally, you can have no more than five?
Fine to me.
And no, and no puppies?
No puppies.
No breeding?
Well, you have five, yeah, here, you have five dogs max. No one five dogs, after, you know, nutrition.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Right, so...
But sometimes I do like to breed and watch, watch the breeding.
But you can't keep the puppies if they don't want...
No, I would get rather, I know that, but I, I barely do that. I mean, you're talking, I've lived on that property for fifteen years. I've done it three times my whole life. I, I, and, and, you know, there's not money. People think there's money in breeding dogs, no, there's not.
No, we know, we know, we know that. We know you don't wanna be a breeder, but the point is...
I do it 'cause I love animals. Look at on my arm, a bulldog from Tom and Jerry, scrapping from Scooby Bill. Look at my back.
No, 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 not okay, that's okay.
Look at my back. I got tattoos all over your dogs.
So the point being, okay, so the point is you have seven now, and as they get older and die off, you can't have any more than five. You can't replace them if they die off.
I won't. I, if you get too old, it's, uh, I got, I got neck issues, I got... So I got, I got neck issues. I gotta go in and have my chest removed because we found cancer in my chest. Yeah, you wanna, you wanna see the video? I'll show you why I gotta go.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, it's January.
Gonna take care of the dogs. Any other board members have any questions on this?
We're gonna take five of them, all family members. I got a girlfriend who, who thinks that I'm old enough to help me, you know, that is no joke, you know? I gotta go in, I gotta get out of the night. I gotta pray to die. I wake up.
We have no further questions here. I'm gonna actually take a seat.
Thank you.
Does anybody like to speak for or against this application, or have a question on this application? Nobody has any questions?
With Carolyn.
Ladies up front, please. Can you give your full name and address?
My name is Susan Osberg, thirteen fifty Main Street Coventry.
Okay, and I ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, knock about the truth about this?
Yes, sir. I live right next door to this property. We have lived there since nineteen ninety-four. I have found the dogs to be large, which is not a problem, but extremely loud. Barking at all times of the day or night, to the point where I've had to call the police at two o'clock in the morning because I can hear the dogs barking. And where I sleep in our house is at the opposite end of our house from where that property line is. And if I can hear the dogs at that hour of the night, almost a hundred feet away, those dogs are too loud. I've seen the dogs in the yard chained to something, having wrapped the chain around a table on a hot summer's day, and the water dish is empty and they couldn't get to it even if they had water in it. I've seen dogs out there in a freezing rain with a chain wrapped around furniture in the yard, barking to try and get out of the freezing rain, and I've had to call the police on them because of that. The junkyard is just that. It's a junkyard. The junk is not stacked up neatly, it's just piled all over. Seeing as how I live next door, I took pictures. Read that I had to take them through the foliage in October, but I took pictures. It's not a pretty sight. I would not put my worst enemy in that yard, and this man has dogs he wants more. It's really not a good environment for any dog, let alone what he wants. Eight of them.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll get you, uh, later on. Uh, can I see if I have any animal control options?
Can I see the, can I see the?
Yeah, perfect, perfect as long, yeah. It's crazy.
No, you're okay.
Okay, I believe I already scored you a written one, sir.
You have to do it again?
No, good.
Carolyn McColl, on seventy-five Main Street. I just made you a small packet, um, and I just documented, I just did the last five years that we've had, um, spoken with, uh, Mr. Bailey. I can go back further if, if the board would like. Um, I made you a small packet, um, the first, um, memo is from, um, Pets in Need. Mr. Bailey went there, um, June, I believe, twenty-seventh of this year. And if you wanna be with us, I usually, um, they contacted, um, Officer Ward, he got from the S P D A in reference to, um, uh, cruelty and the loving of a dog. Give you that at the leisure. From the packet goes into other contacts that we've had with Mr. Bailey. Um, ten-two seventeen, we have to do a well-being check. Six thirteen seventeen, barking dog complaint, another barking dog complaint on four-three seventeen. Um, three-five seventeen, we picked up an aggressive dog at Mr. Bailey's house. He said it wasn't his dog. Um, five eleven sixteen, another barking dog complaint. Twelve eighteen fifteen, I was urged to take the time and re-vet it in court. That was when a little boy was at Mr. Bailey's house. Um, Mr. Little Boy, uh, I believe wasn't invited yet to Mr. Bailey's house, and he kicked Mr. Bailey's dog loose three times and caused injuries to that dog, um, and was charged with cruelty. Eleven thirty fourteen, uh, eleven twenty-three fourteen, gives me a complaint regarding three dogs left outside. Seven five fourteen, stray dog returned to Mr. Bailey. Nineteen thirteen, barking dog complaint, and January nineteenth, two thousand and three, um, dominoes picked up. And Mr. Bailey came and picked him up from the farm. I can go into more detail, or you can read the report.
Okay, so you've been at this location, remember, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how often do you visit? It's only a year, how often do you?
In two thousand and seventeen, we've been there four times.
Okay, and you're mostly getting, uh, calls from some friends and barking dogs, or also from, I guess?
Where he takes his dogs to be vetted, my, also another concern of mine. Mr. Bailey can't afford and needs to be taken into Pets in Need, which I believe he stated that he's on some type of assistance. I have been trying with him, only seven dogs, he didn't manage to afford, afford them.
I agree, um...
I was very unaware that he had seven dogs. I thought he only had the four, that's why he told me he had to get rid of them or get a kennel.
If you're on the, the presentation, you have four dogs, while you're talking about the stuff.
I know Mr. Bailey and having conversations with him at the pound does not mean he's paid neutering. And I'm afraid of what's gonna happen if those seven dogs are allowed to stay at the property.
Okay. Does the, uh, any board member have any questions for this witness?
Other than what's in this one report, um, what's the general health and condition of these dogs? Do you observe them to be in poor health? Uh, it looks like they've been picked up a couple times, we're wondering.
Nothing that would specifically cause us to worry, because clearly doesn't abandon my climate. Do you have to use your authority? If we're in, um, that, that, in the field, we need to, um, that, 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 you know. The, the day we went out with the S P D A investigator, we didn't have enough. We thought we were gonna have enough with the report from that, and, and, but, but it's everything.
Inability to care for pets is not in and of itself a...
Because you can't afford them?
Yeah.
All right, do you have any other questions for this witness? All right, I'm gonna, might wanna bring you back up for a second.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll read it. All right, anybody else like to speak on this application, have a question on it, please? Give you a full name and address.
Brian Osberg, thirteen fifty-six, uh, thirteen fifty Main Street.
Who's raised your right hand? You ready to tell the whole truth, or nothing about the truth on this board?
I do. I was out, I have a boat in the yard, and numerous times, working on the boat, the, these dogs just drive you crazy. Barking, barking. There's four right down where I am, in them cages that he said he had. Uh, he's got a large one and a small one in there. I hear them fighting in there, the little one's yipping, it's getting beat up. Nobody, nobody even comes out and look. There was a big dog within ten feet of me this past spring. I had to give it water because it was almost, it was almost dead. Very close. He was tied up and, and, uh, got his chain around a piece of, uh, tree. Couldn't get, he didn't have any water, and he couldn't get to his doghouse, and he couldn't get any shade, and he was really just about done. I went over there and gave him, oh, half a gallon of water, and, uh, I still see him, so he must've made it. But they don't get fed regular, and they damn sure don't get water.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this application? Please, sir.
Alan Osberg, I live at thirteen fifty-six Main Street.
Who's raised your right hand? You ready to tell the whole truth, or nothing about the truth on this board?
I do. Um, this dog problem, it's been going on for years, uh, dog barking constantly. Four hours of the day and night. I have an audio taken at, uh, two-thirty A M this morning. If you'd like to hear it, I mean, I mean, it's just dog barking, which, you know, you can't shut it off. And no matter what you do, whether you're outside, in the house, you hear dogs barking. And it's, it just gets very annoying. I've spoke to him many times, asking him to do something about it, but nothing ever gets done. And, um, you know, it's, it's like, you know, if somebody was blowing the horn on a car, you know, you know it would stop. But if they, if they were blowing on the horn all day, non-stop, you know, it, it just really, uh, it's annoying, it's a nuisance. Um, there should be, you know, some sort of supervision going on. Um, you know, and, and some of those dogs are kinda dangerous dogs. I, I've had them, you know, they, there's times they run loose, come into my yard because it isn't always, I mean, it, it isn't all fenced in. And they've come into my yard and growl, bark, snap their teeth, you know? They're not very friendly dogs.
Have, have you, um, uh, ever observed any kind of, um, vermin or anything like that on the property?
Vermin, uh, dead animals?
No. Rats? Anything like that around the property?
No, I've never noticed any.
All right. Is that the pictures?
No.
The, the audio?
It's, uh, audio and, and video, it's-
Oh, okay.
It doesn't show the dog.
You can submit-
It's in the middle of the night, but the audio's hot.
Um, yeah, you can give it to the, you can give it to the court.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak on this application? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, um, this is Board Leader Patrick Doherty. I'm an attorney with offices in, uh, Mary Gansville, Rhode Island, at eight eighty-seven Boston F Road. I'm here on behalf of the Director of Butter Cedar Creek Realty Properties LLC, uh, which has a, uh, it's received master plan approval awaiting recording of a nineteen building, thirty-eight condo unit, uh, development. Condos are, um, projected to be in the market range of two hundred and seventy thousand to three hundred and forty thousand per unit. It's a six million dollar, uh, investment in real estate development, and it's-
You're gonna give testimony to it?
No, I'm not. I'm just giving argument, and I do have witnesses here to give testimony. Um, it's, uh, basically something that would, we bring in approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of taxes to the town on a annual basis. Um, I, I understand the applicant's, uh, desire to, you know, to wanna have animals and whatnot, but I think as, just as a matter of procedure and law with respect to this application, um, there's Rhode Island case law. It's, the burden is upon the applicant to pick forward a case to meet all the criteria necessary for the issuance of a special use permit. And I haven't heard any of that. I've heard some testimony and what he wants and what he would like to have. And in accordance with the Rhode Island Supreme Court's decision, case law dating back to the seventies and even nineteen forty-five, uh, Giberson versus Roman Catholic Bishop of Providence, one twelve Rhode Island, two fifty-two, three oh eight Atlantic Second, five oh three, citing Olivoson versus Zilling Board of Reviews, seventy-one Rhode Island, three oh three, forty-four Atlantic Second, seven twenty, nineteen forty-five. Okay, yeah, there, there is existing case law that says that the burden is on the applicant, and if the applicant fails to present adequate competent evidence to prove the applicable standards for the issuance of a special use permit, the board must deny the application. There has been no compliance and no evidence with respect to virtually all of, uh, section four thirty-two, A through K, that this board requires to be submitted into the record for the issuance of a special use permit. So I would posit that the board has no alternative other than to deny this application as a matter of law right now for failure to satisfy any competent evidence as to the necessary criteria. That being said, though, in the abundance of caution in order to protect the record, I do have, um, John Asseline here, uh, who is an interested person in the development, um, and he has taken some photographic evidence that we'd like to submit to the board.
Please.
Along, um, and I, I will have Mr. Asseline also authenticated, but I have copies here of an aerial photograph showing the situated property, as well as individual photographs taken from the abutting property showing the conditions. I, I also have, uh, Gerald, um, Rock here, who's a real estate appraiser to provide, I can have him do it in a quick narrative form for interest of speeding things up here, and I'd like to call Mr. Rock up first if I may. And, uh, Chairman, I have copies of Mr. Rock's, uh, certification qualifications and also his appraisal statistics.
Mr. Rock has appeared before us before.
I'll accept his testimony, his expert testimony.
I would, yeah, I would have a motion, uh-
I'm with-
Okay, you accept, uh, Mr. Rock as an assertion of witness in real estate, uh, for, uh, all those who say aye?
Aye.
Mayes?
My name is, 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 Mr. Rock, do you have any opinions as a property attorney from the outside, yeah?
Yes, I have.
And have you, um, made a, a study, a course of studies, the impact of this proposed kennel on this land property?
Uh, yes, I have formulated a, an opinion. It's been well spoken how loud dogs can be. And the board is well aware of how loud, what's, the key is, what type of impact does this have on value? And I have done numerous appraisals, before and after appraisals, paid sales studies, where houses are near highways, away from highways, near the airport, away from the airport, all kinds of noise-type studies. And I can say unequivocally that there will be a negative impact on residential properties in the immediate area. I've had a ten-minute dissertation all set for you, but I think that might be a little overkill at, at this point. But I, I've also, I'd like to say that I've done a study for the Rhode Island, uh, Department of Transportation in the late eighties, where I did an actual setback study. And I examined three hundred paid sales of houses near the highway, away from the highway, to determine what type of impact it was. And after looking at this whole situation, it, um, it's my opinion that the- that there'd be a significant negative impact on property values in the immediate area. No, it's my, my opinion that it would not be, this type of use would not be in keeping with the, uh, the neighborhood environment. Well, I think you've, we've heard from you, some of the butters over here as far as what their opinion was. So from, certainly from a psychological standpoint, it, you know, it appears it would, but especially from evaluation, and especially in terms of Mr. Assalon's proposed project of seventy-eight condo units, each of which is gonna be valued in the three hundred thousand dollar range, and of which there's going to be some seventy-five, seventy-six new constituents in the town of Coventry, or relocated constituents who, um, uh, will not be, uh, will be affected by excessive noise from the dogs. Thirty-eight condo units, I was multiplying those by two for the residents.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Rock, you've been over there and visited, and you've actually seen, uh, the intention that the dogs are kept.
Yes.
What's your opinion of that?
If I were to judge by the exterior appearance of the facility at this point, um, uh, I would have very little hope that it would, by granting this thing that the, it, the situation would improve. It's, it's, as other neighbors, butters have, uh, attested to, there's, um, debris all over the yard. Uh, the kennels are just without a floor, they're chain link. And, um, it's not a professional, um, far from it. It's a, it's, it's, it's inappropriate for the area. It's an eyesaw, basically.
It's an eyesaw. It definitely would not, uh, does not enhance the area for real estate value.
Correct. Does not.
All right, so putting a kennel over there would not solve the problem?
No. No, I don't see, um, how any, any type of, uh, any type of structures would improve the situation over that.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
Thank you.
How is this being tested? You can research that for us?
Brian, just, just a question, um, as I get into this. The applicant, did anybody walk him through the procedure for tonight and what the standards that have you met, have you met? Has he been made aware of that information? Because it sounds like he was just told to show up and, you know, and he's facing lawyers and everything else and. Do you think he comprehended it? You don't know?
Continue. Full name and address, please.
My name is John Assalon. My address is six Veronica Court, Coventry.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth from this board?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you. Personally, I am totally disappointed at the assistant planner. I sat here this evening. I've seen renderings on there. I've seen Google Earth on there. That is one of the ugliest sites in Coventry, and I'm, I'm sorry for the gentleman that lives there. That's one of the ugliest sites in Coventry. Comes in with this set. Like, you can't, you can't use Google Earth? I've been down to his office showing him junkyards on the property, and he's sitting here and telling you to beware that it's industrial property? It, it's amazing. How can you do this? How can you show that up there?
And you can't see the junk box? The back door? Okay, these, um, the pictures I took myself.
The pictures that I took myself were dated October seventeenth. I did not take that photo myself. Uh, my secretary went on Google Earth, um, and I believe that was in two sixteen. It's hard to see the cars in there, but you'll see them on mine. So, and there are more cars there now than there were there before. Um, the other narrative, I guess, if you call it a narrative, the only thing noisier on my job than the, uh, sander when we try and break down the sand out of the stones is not my machinery, is the dogs barking. So, industrial otherwise, the, I sent pictures to the planner, and he comes here with this. It bothers my mind, so I'm sorry. So I, what I'm gonna present to you now, photos that I took on October seventeenth, without going on the property, if that's okay.
There are two pages here that are not bringing up. It's just to show you, also to the junkyard, these things that sit on the property line. It's not allowed to be on the property line. It's considered a noseback. It's a twenty-five to fifty-foot step back on the pocket line and or corner of the pocket line. This is, this is a dog out from the house. All junk, fencing, electric cars, all over the line. Speaking of, my hearing is also, I'm not holding it very long, sorry. I did not, anyway, it was, it was. And how this can even exist without?
Mr. Assalon, are these true and accurate copies of pictures taken by you on the date stated they're on October seventeenth of twenty seventeen?
Yes, they are. I took them myself.
And are they fair and accurate representations of the property as they existed on record? Is it a fair and accurate representation of the condition of the property as it exists currently?
Uh, yes, it is, but that's as close as I could get to it, so you'll see more if you were on the property. And you, the odor from the side is there, if you want to walk up to the sideline. And I'm, and I'm serious about the, um, um, the, the noise of the dogs over, over the equipment when they start. You can't shut them up. I feel terribly sorry for some of these people. I mean, if you have an annoying dog in your, in your neighbor, okay? It's like, the best explanation was, the horn is gonna eventually stop. You can't stop the dogs. I called the, um, animal control officer. She's very pleasant. And I asked her if she was cited, if she was gonna be cited for the dogs. You allow three in Coventry. And the irony is, she can't cite them because of the dogs because, um, an application has been made. So it's, it's clearly over the limit for dogs. But the animal, animal control officer can't do anything because it's being, it's being applied for. And, um, I don't know, if you want to ask me something, I'd be glad to answer it. But this crap, showing this, when he knows what it is, he could've gone to Google Earth, is out of line. Totally out of line. That is not a fair presentation to this board or to this community. Not at all. I'm a little sensitive to landscaping. I try to do a good job. I'm disgusted with some of Tile Avenue. Some people are really trying to improve it, but, you know, you walk, you go through this town. It could be such a beautiful town, and nobody follows through. But come here and show that, out of line. I'm sorry. I mean, I'm gonna finish, but I say, if I can help this gentleman next door in some way, believe me, I'd be glad to do it. I don't know how, but I absolutely oppose the kennel. And I'm gonna do whatever I can to get that place. I'm gonna put a tree barrier there, but do we exist like that? Junkyard? No.
I, I just have a quick question. You're a director butter? You're the property next to this?
I'm sorry?
You're a direct a-butter. You're right next to this property.
There are homes gonna be right along that property line as by code. There'll be homes going down, uh, this property line.
Okay, so the condos, they won't face the property? That will be their backyard?
Two of the, two of the, uh, two of the backyards will be against the kennels.
Against, yeah, the kennels.
Again, I can, you know, I can do something about beautification. I will. That whole highway is gonna be beautified. Um, there's ten acres of open space there. But what do you do about a kennel? What do you do about excess of dogs that aren't allowed, that you can't get them out of there?
Right.
So I'll, I'll pursue that if I have to, but if I can help him do something over there personally, I will do it.
Do you have any thoughts in mind how you could help him?
Yeah, I, 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 I do. I could help him, um, provide him with some things to get him, to get him going over there. You know, to help him maintain three dogs, to do some cleanup for him that he said he can't afford. And I, I have no reason to doubt this man whatsoever. I will do those things. I'll be glad to do them. I'm a, I think he's a nice person. He's got a situation that he can't handle right now, in my opinion. If I can do some of those things, I will. I'll get the place cleaned up. And, and get him help with his, with three dogs off, off the property line.
Okay, so Mr. Assalon, you're willing to assist this gentleman to comply to rules and regulations set within the town?
Absolutely.
All right, is any other?
Thank you.
I'm just having a question, please. Okay, yes, uh, at this time here, we. All right, we can make a motion to accept the ones that have been submitted at this time. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept the photos that have been submitted? Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, can I have a vote on it? All those, uh, uh, wish to approve the, uh, motion? Say aye?
Aye. We have photographs from Mr. Osborne, and then we have an audio recording from Mr. Osborne.
One, two, and this would be three, right? Right, so all three exhibits, all right.
I'll make a motion on the first one. On one and two at the same time. I make a motion that we, we accept exhibits one and two as presented.
Second.
I have a second. All those who say aye?
Aye.
May? Now, you wish to, uh, make a motion to accept exhibits three?
Do that one. Very easy.
Okay.
I will.
So you have your question.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, final points that I, I just have to make, obviously, on behalf of my client, um, it extended the indication, an annual of measures and a board, uh, who want to view the property from this, uh, perspective. And then the final thing that I'd just like to underscore, um, with respect to, um, the stuff from the criteria. There are, I, I did hear Mr. Wagner, um, reference that it is industrial, uh, zone. And, um, in that effect, uh, the applicant would be required under section four thirty-two I to show that the use will not result in or create conditions that will exceed the industrial performance standards in Article seven. In addition to that, uh, screening and other requirements contained in Article seventeen, evidence was required for that. In addition to that, Article fifteen, the sign, the lighting, and so on and so forth. And I, I do appreciate your comments, um, with respect to, um, the applicant and what he was doing there. His obligations, well, it's in the orders. And it's not up to the town to, to marshal a, a person's application. Get it together, it's to bring it, whether or not it's, it's, it's complete and put it on for a hearing. And, uh, you know, I understand, you know, we all have hearts as human beings and whatnot, but there are ordinances and regulations under the police powers contained here that the town council sees fit to limit the number of dogs to three in the town. And to seek a special use permit in the event that you want to have more than that to get a kennel license for the town council. Look at their responsibilities and obligations. And I posit that they simply haven't been met here. With all due respect to the applicant's desire to have dogs, we, we have laws as well, and they have to be followed. So I would ask that the board deny the application, and, uh, thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak on this application? Yes, ma'am, please come up. I'm gonna ask you to give your full name and address.
Uh, my name is Wendy Maskiel. Uh, my address is fifty-six Maple Avenue, um, building out in Summit, one oh four in West LA. M.A.S.K.I.E.L.L. I.E.L.L.
I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth from this board?
I do.
What would you like to say?
Okay. For starters, I have been with this man for ten years. And I have witnessed many times that he has taken care of his dogs very well. He makes sure that they're fed, and he lets them get exercise. He takes very good care of them. He loves his animals very much, and he's only asking to keep his animals. And as far as the, uh, the property and the way it looks, and it's considered private property. That's the private property, it's, you're allowed to do what you want as long as it, it doesn't, you know, affect other people or, you know, you're not breaking any laws. The fact that this used to be a farm, and he should be granted all this rights to have it again, what he's only asking to keep. He's not asking them to be a puppy mill or, or, or create other more dogs. He's asking, you know, to keep the dogs in his house. And the condos decided to move next door and build next to the property line, which was before was a bunch of woods, and it was pretty, you know, kept the, kept the sound out. But now there's the condos next door. They, they, it's like moving into somebody else's neighborhood, and you, and what's already there, telling them, I don't like what's there, you have to get rid of it because I don't like it. They moved there. They, the dogs. They, the dogs were already there, and he's had them. He should be allowed to keep what he already has. It's, it's his property, and yes, there, there is a lot of stuff, but it's not all his. Some of it is his sister's, is the toys in the area, and yes, he does have some scrap, and there's a barn there. And he brings the animals in the barn in the wintertime, or when it's cold out, when the weather's not favorable. And he always makes sure they have food and water. And he does take care of them. And there's only five dogs outside, and they're, not all of them are big. There's like only maybe about a foot and a half high. And the rest are, you know, about that size, they're a little smaller. Um, I'd just like to say that, you know, it's just not, it's just not fair to him to have to get rid of dogs that he, he had and would like to keep. Um, you know, he's not, he doesn't have, I don't, I don't consider that a lot, a lot of, a lot of animals. And, you know, and if, if the noise was a problem, he could take them in, he could take them into the house, or whatever. But he just wants to be able to keep them. And, you know, to get rid of them is really, really, really breaking apart. You don't understand how much he loves his animals. And, um, and I understand that everybody has a right to, you know, to peace and quiet, and to their own, to their own dwellings, and what, what you have you. But like I said before, the animals were already there, and the condos moved next door. It's not right for them to say, well, I don't like that, or I don't like how that property looks. They were there before they got there. They moved there. They should've considered that before they moved there, if they didn't like the way the property was. They should've chose a different site.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, I want to bring the applicant back up, please. Sir, you've heard the concern of your neighbors, not just your new neighbor building the condos?
I know him, John, Big John, I know.
All right, well, I'm, I'm, that's, with, you know...
No, I know he owns, I know, he owns half of Coventry, I know that.
No, 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 no. He's no, I'm not concerned with him. I'm more concerned with all your other neighbors.
Cause he's got this, guess what I got?
Wait a minute, you're not listening to me. You're not listening to me.
All right, sir.
I'm not concerned with Mr. Asson. All right, I'm concerned mostly right now, all your other neighbors are putting up with this for you.
And?
And, yes.
I've known Al, I've known him, I've known her. I, they, they come to me, Danny, your dog's barking. No problem. They haven't came to me in two years. I haven't, there hasn't, when's the last time a cop came and knocked at my door and said, Dan, your dog's a barking? Ask them, I'll get up at two thirty in the morning, in my underwear, freezing cold, if it was. I'm allowed, I, I can't even remember the last time. When did she say the last time?
But that's just not it. The, the, the point is trying to go for...
Yeah, I understand that, but...
No, you don't have, you don't have just one neighbor coming up. You've got almost every single one of your neighbors coming up. This is not just one neighbor.
Yeah, I know, they, they live on the same property right there.
Sir.
Yes.
Apparently, you do have the problem with the dogs barking. You're taking care of them. There's no...
Taking care of them.
Well, what you consider taking care of them...
Come take a look at them.
And, and, and sir, sir, listen. Mr. Asson extended a leave here. He's saying to you...
Yep, the three dogs. I told you, take a gun, shoot me right here in your head. Do that. And I'll see you in heaven, too.
We have to, we have to make things work compatible to everybody in the neighborhood. You've got to respect the other people in the neighborhood.
I do respect people, Your Honor.
You know, uh, just, so I'm asking you is that, I want you to think about this, and, uh, I mean, you know, there's not, there's not a neighbor over there that's agreeing with you that this is under control.
The, I have, no, when they come to my door, they say, hey, Dan, and he has, Al's came to my door, his brother. I don't see any other neighbor, I see John. Yeah, John, I, I would, I'm gonna come over there, too. I'm gonna say, hey, listen, I got these big condos coming. I'm gonna make millions. I see what's next door. Oh, I gotta scratch my head ninety million times, cause I know I ain't gonna rent one. Because my grandfather, my great-grandfather built that property with his bare hands. He sat there, he died on that property, my great-grandmother died on that property. I'll die on that property.
I understand, I understand.
Put, put aside all that. The fact that the neighbors are complaining and knocking on your door, doesn't that tell you there's a problem with the dogs barking?
No, and I have, I have, they, they haven't came to me in a long time.
Did you hear, did you hear the dogs barking outside?
Ah, and the dogs will bark when somebody's around. Am I right or wrong?
Yes, you're right.
That's why people get dogs. Dogs will bark when somebody's around. My dogs don't bite. That, ask the animal control lady. She, I don't think one time I've got anybody, my dogs are all healthy. My six-month-old, they always come over and look at him, pick him up. You ain't gonna pick him up. You're gonna say, where are they coming from? I had the S A P, the big head hot show, right, got arms like John Travolta or whatever, right? He came to my house and he said, Mr. Bailey, there's nothing wrong with your dogs.
Now, I'm thinking about your actual dogs, that you love and care of. Now...
I love all of them.
That's right. Now, wouldn't you want to be able to maintain them a little better? Like you said, you only do so much financially. You can only do so much.
I do, I do.
And, and if you had three dogs that you could maintain, take well care of, and have a lot of pride in them, wouldn't that be a better solution?
What you're just saying to me right now, you're spitting my face with what you just said, I can't take out my animals. Sir, I'm, I'm on disability, so that makes me a bad person, because when I was born, I, I died at six months old because the doctor told my mother, give him this formula, I'd be hydrated. I had to be full helicopter from Coventry. I was born and wore it, yes. And then you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna come take my animals. Well... Now, I know, I, I, I can see, cause I'm, I'm just a, a, a lonely man on disability, and I'm fighting, uh, you know, a toll. And I'm the guy at the bottom with a, with one hose, and I ain't going nowhere. I don't know what to do.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Um, are you aware of a police report dated December eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen? Um, where it says you kicked a dog?
I didn't kick the dog. Here's what happened. Here's what happened, I explain it. A friend of my, my friend, my friend called me up and said, Danny, can my son come hang out for a day? We're arguing. Okay, I said, okay. I noticed, son, that a pat jumped over. Dog peed on his foot. He got mad. I was in the bathroom taking a shower. I heard the dog cry, right? I said, what the hell happened? I come out, I said, CJ, what's going down here? He goes, oh, the dog peed. I said, so where's the dog? He kicked the dog in between the couch. Right?
Was it, was it cute?
He begged me, he begged me, please, don't call the cops, I'll give you what I got. No, no, you're gonna pay the consequences, which you did to that dog. I could've brushed out under the rug, washed my hands, but God don't like dirty. God don't like dirty. No, he don't. I said, I'm gonna punish you. His father don't talk to me to this day, because I called the police, and I've known his father for a long time. But you hurt something, you can hurt an animal, what's next, hurting a child? Hurting somebody else? That's my belief.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I did not hurt no animal. I made that man pay. You know?
I, I think you have a good, you have a good, um, suggestion about withdrawing. I suggest that maybe you might wanna talk to Mr. Asson, see other ways he could help you out here. Maybe there's another solution.
All right.
Um, maybe the solution would, that would work for everybody.
All right.
Um, that's one tactic. I can't advise you on what to do. I can just say that's another path to look at.
Well, I don't know what else to do. Uh, they, they, cause I came here, cause that's what the dog come said. They're gonna take my animals, and before they do that, they gotta come with guns, because I'm gonna go out, I'm, I'm, I, you ain't taking my animals. I just, nope.
One thing you've gotta understand is, I understand it's been, the land's been a bit more awkward, but there is rules and regulations, like you can't...
I follow the rules, sir.
Vehicles, you can't have that unsightly, the junk in the backyard. And the place has gotta be kept up pretty good.
I do do my, my share.
Do your share to your ability, and I don't deny that. But it's not too the correct, for... And that's, we're all, everybody here is trying to explain this to you very politely. And...
Can I see the pictures?
It's a, yeah, sure.
Yeah, let me see the picture.
Yeah. Come on up, sir. I, I don't think you'll disagree with any of it.
Yeah, uh, this is the fence, this is, this is one of the kennels, yeah, this is another kennel, a wooden thing, and they're not on the ground. Yeah, I, that, that car's been here, that's the truck I just put the mowing, right? That's the other truck that I'm gonna be strapping. That's all strapped, you know? It's all, it's all in the backyard where nobody can see it, sir.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just saying it's not up to standard. You know, unfortunately, times are changing.
I know times are changing, and that, that, that's cruel.
And it's cruel.
I know when I go to heaven, there's a way better place, there ain't no judgment, you know, past judgment. I'll tell you, cause if I open the gates, I'm gonna talk to God if he comes down, I'm gonna tell you. There'll be a lot of people burning.
We need to stick to standards, A K K, it contains a dog kennel. I mean, that's all stuff that's gonna be addressed, but that's really not addressed in the kennel, unless you wanna make the argument how it relates to having a kennel. But, um, the condition of the property is another totally different issue.
Yeah, I'm just asking, just to have, it was there. When my great-grandfather built the, that park, I just tore it down, put a fence up.
Well, you don't understand, again, we're just gonna discuss the kennel. And the seven dogs that you have is not...
At first she said I could have five.
Well, I didn't say that, I...
Yeah, and, and they agreed, I...
Well, but we heard of the testimony since then as well, and we got away everything that comes into the room tonight.
Yeah, all right.
But you can't have three dogs.
Yeah, I, I...
But again, you can't have three barking dogs. I mean, this is some, you have responsibility...
You want me to cut your vocals out so these dogs, and then you say, oh, he's animal cruelty? I understand that. I know when you get older, and I'm not saying that. Nobody came here when they did. I addressed it, and I did it. I mean, if you don't come to me, how can I do it? And then you say, oh, he kicked the dog, I never did anything like...
No, I asked the question, I didn't say, I was pushing the...
No, no, I know you didn't, but there's other people saying, oh, did he do that?
Okay.
No.
Mr. Bailey.
So do you want to withdraw, or do you want us to think a vote?
He can't advise.
He cannot legally advise him either.
No, but he's a good guy, he's helping, and that woman right there, thumbs up. I know they're going to heaven, and that guy in that black shirt will too.
Okay, uh, what I'd like to do is take this under advisement at this time, and, uh, we can either render the decision at the end of this evening, or just allow...
I want to watch the property, I want to, like, to do every account, to be diligent.
Be diligent, so, uh, I would, at this time here, uh, do I have a motion that we continue this? Uh, take this decision under advisement and render the decision in a reasonable amount of time?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's made.
So we're not gonna vote on tonight, we're gonna look at the property, we're gonna go out, take a look at things.
Is this a piece of paper?
We're gonna vote next month.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
Uh, second, first Wednesday, uh, December sixth.
I got that written.
Okay, okay.
I appreciate it.
Everybody, how do they vote on that motion at this time? Do, say, approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Ayes, ahs. Okay, at this time here, now we have the County Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm gonna have...
What are appeals?
Uh, I'm gonna let the...
What are appeals for what?
All right, at this time here, I'd like to have a motion to convene, uh, for the County Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, adjourn, uh, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn as the County Zoning Board will review. All right, uh, motion is made, and seconded by Denise. Again, we're gonna, uh, adjourn.
Yes, fine.
Okay, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay?
Yes, fine.
At this time here, I'd like to open up and convene for the County Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, so, uh, I'm gonna do next app for, appeal application. Okay, I am the secretary, please read the appeal into the record. Advocate here.
And, uh, my name is Richard Cogan. I've been working with any of the citizens, uh, supporting the ten thirty-five D Street.
Okay, you gonna give testimony, Mr. Cogan?
I don't believe so, uh, at, at the point, but it might be necessary, I would sooner...
By just the record, give your full name and address. I'm gonna swear you in, uh, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, Father Floyd?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, this is a violation that we brought, I, the general officer, uh, the officer, uh, to the panel, uh, uh, thirteen, uh... I'm going to go forward, um, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to come.
On our fourth, um, um, town far north, uh, uh, I have, uh, members of the fellow officers, uh, through to, to the government, and I through, for the activation, and, and the, 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 uh, I don't know, the, the, uh, the, uh.
We need to call the police, the phone, okay?
May I suggest, there's only a lot of, uh, that, that, the number of them, for, for back, for, uh. The, uh, the notice of violation, uh, uh, town, uh.
No, I've already sworn you in. Just give you full name and address.
Uh, this is from the, uh, after, with the, the, the property, uh, the, uh, road, uh, by, by, uh, I open. And, uh, I just wonder if, if, uh, the, uh, property, um, is what, uh, is the basis for, uh, your, uh, property?